Ubisutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
I noticed the governor signed a plethora of new laws that affects probably everybody in this room. They limit both powers of elected officials, elected locally, and also limits a lot of parental rights for a number of different things. Before I get into what I want to speak about, first I want to thank the physical education staff that we have here for how they went about some of the curriculum that's going around. But that leads me to this: what's being passed out to our students? There's things in here that they're teaching as fact when there is no settled science on any of this stuff. I won't get into all of it here. In regards to things like birth control, when it comes to contraception for our daughters, the very first thing listed here is sterilization as a form of birth control. The very first thing, nowhere, when it comes to talk about birth control or ways to avoid an STD, does it talk about the one thing that guarantees you to 100% avoid those things, which is abstinence? Nowhere in that book does it say that word one time. I'm trying to understand what it is that we're teaching our kids. And don't get me wrong, this is in no way pointed toward the school district, the school. Understand, this is now a state law, and the people that are making decisions for us are not the parents of our children. This should show just the level of depravity that we've fallen into. It's disgusting. I remember when I was growing up and in school, they hammered into us, "No means no, no means no, no means no," especially for our daughters. This curriculum goes about it the opposite way. "Yes means yes." That definitely shines a different light when we're trying to raise our daughters a certain way. Everyone may not agree with me, but that's okay. When new laws come down from this state, especially laws like this, when it's now a state requirement and we have to acquiesce to it, parents need to be well-informed and pay attention to everything your child is bringing home, because there is a waiver for this stuff, so your child doesn't have to see it. But like I said, I'm thankful for the teachers that we have, because they are going about it a certain way, where this kind of stuff isn't going in too much depth. But when these laws come down from a governor, who at the same time passes laws where if a 12-year-old wants to cross state lines and change their gender surgically, they're going to get a state-funded surgery, where at the same time, your child can't go in and get their ears pierced without a parent there. Pay attention to what's going on in this state. Parents be involved. There's a lot of parents, especially... Be involved with your child. I can't stress it enough. Pay attention to what they're doing, what they're doing on their phones. Be involved with them in education, because the state does not have the same values as many of us. Thanks for being here.
Dr. Yang, Ms. Hays.
Yes, welcome. I'm glad you are all here. We had an election recently, and now we have different challenges than some of us expected, and we will have to work very creatively. And I look forward to working with all of us in the room, committed to the students of our community.
Thank you. Doug Criddle.
Frank Clapper.
Yes, as I was driving in, again, I've done 50 years, but I noticed on the sign at the track, and boy, was I happy. And I owe it to the superintendent and you folks for getting it done. I've been on this board, as many of you know, for way too long, yeah, 12 years and counting. And I've wanted a track for you people and one for Lynnhurst since 1972, when I started my career at Marysville High. And I just want to let you know, your money is going and being spent in good places, too. Thank you.
Gary Criddle.
Well, echoing other board members, we're happy to have you here. Happy St. Patty's Day in advance. We are certainly having to adjust after the failure of our bond. We certainly appreciate all the volunteers and all the volunteer hours that were invested in that effort. And we move on. Obviously, the majority speaks, but the problems and the challenges for this district do go on. And so you will be seeing what that means by not adding another school. So we certainly appreciate everybody who got involved with that and all the well-wishers we had across the community. So thank you. Now we have recognitions.
Good evening, President Davis, members of the board, and from a very full audience. My name is Jay Truhu, and it's my pleasure to bring to you this special event of the evening, where we celebrate some very special awardees, both on the student's side and on the staff's side. And first tonight is our spelling bee recognition. I want to give a shout-out to Mr. Hector Gonzalez, who helps to put this program together. First, our... Yes, of course. Thank you. First, we have our elementary grade award winners, and I'm going to start in reverse order. And let me first say that the winners, the first-place winners, are going to get their names placed on this plaque. So get ready for that. And then the plaque will hang proudly at the school where the student attends. So in fourth place, from Browns Valley Elementary School, it's Sadie Croft. Come on in, Sadie. Come on in. Congratulations, Sadie. And our third place and second place students are not here, so let me just go right to the number one. Our first-place winner from Cedar Lane Elementary School, Francisco Garcia Ledezma. Congratulations, Francisco. And from the junior high, 7th and 8th grade, we had a tie for third place, and one of our third-place winners is here. Eli... I'm sorry, thank you. Eli Hamilton Cathcart. I hope I said... No, I just blew that. I'm sorry. From Foothill. 7th grader. Excellent. And by the skin of his teeth, Hector, our award winner. First place, Hector Rincon Lucatero from Foothill. The young man's name, who I butchered, is Cathcart. So thank you, Mr. Cathcart. All right. Parents, staff members, if you want to come up and take some pictures of these fine young scholars, please come on down. Ms. Hick? Yes. All right. Congratulations, all of you. This evening, we also have a very special school recognition. A special recognition goes out to Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts for being recognized by the California Department of Education as a 2024 California Distinguished School. I'd like to have Mr. Preston and any staff members, Mr. Preston and any staff members, please come on down and be recognized. All right. Mr. Garrett, come on up. And just to be clear, schools under this designation are recognized for exceptional student performance based on achieving exemplary academic performance in ELA and mathematics, reducing suspensions, and demonstrating high graduation rates. Additionally, schools are selected by analyzing data with a focus on excellence and growth in academic achievement, and ensuring and creating a positive school culture. So MJUSD is very proud of the MCAA staff, students, community, parents, and administration. Congratulations to all of you. And finally, this is our opportunity to highlight our students and staff for outstanding performance and recognition that demonstrate kindness, leadership, and positive impact. And first, on our students' side, from Browns Valley, Kason Bennett. Oh, my goodness. From Cedar Lane, Aurora Chavez-Gallardo. From Cordova, Kendall Vess. From Dobbins, Rhett Kristofferson. From Ella, Sofia Palomares Salas. From Foothill, Chloe Favilla. From Marysville High School, Emma Catron. And from North-South, Lindhurst High School, Hector Pina. Congratulations. Parents, feel free to come and take some pictures. Students, if you'd move on over to the center, move to the center, move to the center, so they can take pictures. If you want to take pictures. Smile big, smile big. That's why we come to work every day. Congratulations to all of you. And of course, our staff members. We wouldn't have these wonderful students without wonderful staff members. It is my pleasure to call from Cordova Elementary, Yaclyn Vasquez Silva. From the district office, our very own Adriana Espinoza. Also, from the district office, Rosio Rodriguez. From Edgewater, Bonnie Falcons. From Johnson Park, Angel Dark. And from Uva Gardens, Sarah Bowle. Did I call who? Oh, yes, and Sean Gilani. I'm sorry. Come on down. Sean Gilani. You must have snuck in.
Thank you.
Okay, get on into the middle, so we can take pictures. Excellent. Thank you for being such good models for all of us. Congratulations.
Now we have time for our school representatives. Marysville High School, please state your name.
Good evening, board. My name is Maya Splino. I serve as the ASB vice president for Marysville High School, and I'm here to update you on all of the exciting events happening here at MHS. Just to start, March Madness is in full swing, and ASB has started our Give Back events for both staff and students. One example of our events is celebrating staff who go above and beyond in our morning announcements by just giving them a shout-out. As for sports, our swim team has won almost every meet this season, and boys golf and tennis have also done exceedingly well in all of their matches. Just around the corner is our Animal Morph Dance. Morph is a casual dance where students and their friends can dress up to a coordinating theme and enjoy food, trust, music, game, and more. And that is all I have to report for now. Thank you so much for your time. I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you. Lindhurst High School, please state your name.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Fallizrani, and everyone here today. My name is Diane Ortega Moreno, and I'm Lindhurst ASB president. I would like to start off by thanking those who came to our BMAs. We want to thank you for attending, and we appreciate you, and we hope you guys enjoyed it as much as we did. It was a very successful event, and lots of students were able to get recognized, as well as our 300 Blazers earning academic honor roll for their fall semester achievements, which includes 82 students earning 3.0 to 3.49 GPAs, 148 earned Dean's List recognition for earning 3.5 to 4.0 GPA, and the principal's list recognition given to students earning a 4.0 and above was earned by 101 Lindhurst Blazers. Lindhurst High values resilience, tenacity, and the effort it takes to make improvements, so we have awarded 264 Rising Star Awards. These were given to students who improved their GPA by .5 or more. The class of 2024 should be working on their financial aid or Fast Food documents, and workshops to support seniors will be coming in March, as seniors have begun to share their exciting acceptance letters. Now, moving on to sports, Lindhurst's spring sports lineup is looking strong, with baseball, softball, tennis, track, and swim teams all gearing up for a competitive season. and swim teams all gearing up for a competitive season. We are thrilled to introduce boys volleyball as our newest addition to our sports. Each team is training hard with dedicated coaches and athletes aiming for victory. We are very excited for this year's season and eagerly anticipate the thrilling matches and tournaments ahead. Now, on to our clubs. The LHS Mental Health Club is continuing to increase connections between students and district mental health resources at Lindhurst. The club is excited to host a Wellness Movie Day in March, complete with Inside Out and popcorn. We are pleased to announce and introduce the Environmental Cleanup and Conservation Club, or ECC. They will be doing campus cleanups after school starting next week. Not only that, but our Among Club will be hosting their Among Culture Festival on May 3rd. Additionally, the sophomore class will be hosting their Sadie Hawkins Dance on March 28th at our Lindhurst Gym. And finally, the junior class is proud to present this year's prom on April 20th at the Ranch at Lone Oak Longhorns. The theme is Garden Gala. Lindhurst FFA has been staying busy with on-campus FFA activities, some of them being next week, 18 students from LHS will be headed to Sacramento to a four-day California State FFA Leadership Conference. One of our FFA students, Elizabeth Silva, competed at the Superior Region Speaking Contest in the job interview contest. Elizabeth was also slated for Superior Region FFA Secretary with final elections coming up next month. Leadership is starting to prepare for more upcoming events, such as Food Day for Clubs on March 22nd, as well as ASB elections before spring break. With that, I would like to bring up our lunch program, which has started the rollout of a new, updated, and enhanced menu. Our students seem to enjoy the new meal options. Lastly, I would like to take a moment and honor one of our amazing football coaches, who unfortunately passed a few weeks ago. He was a great inspiration to not only his family and friends, but to our students at Lindhurst. Everyone who knew him can say that his dedication to coaching went beyond the field. This last week, we had a candlelight vigil where members of the community were able to come and remember Coach Bun for who he was and for who he will continue to be remembered as to those who are close to him. Thank you, guys, for listening, and I hope you guys enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you very much.
Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts, please state your name.
Hello, everybody. My name is Garrett Granger, 2RS2TEs. I am the ASB President for Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts. Just really quick before I start, do you happen to have any extra copies of that sex education book? I'm just... Okay, awesome, because it's different from what I remember in 10th grade, and I love to read what changes were made in that. But besides that, quickly, Marysville Charter Academy for the Arts was not represented January or February, and I sincerely apologize for that, but I am here now. First things first, Interact Club showed up to help with bandits and bandanas. Interact Club is our school, or our school club, which is kind of partnering with the Marysville Rotary Club, and so they got to go in to help out with bandits and bandanas. So it was a really great opportunity to get volunteer hours. Next, last Friday, we had Dragon Fest, which is basically our school talent show that we hold at lunch. We had two people audition. We had someone do a hula dance and another person sing a cappella. And then otherwise, we had Advanced Guitar do Enter Sandman, and then we had some violin performances. It was an amazing, it was an amazing event. We had a lot of our students out there. We set up some benches, set up some pop-ups, and it was really great. Sadie Hawkins is coming up this Friday. That is a 10th grade dance. And in lieu of that, this week has been Spear Week. Today is Emo Day, and on Friday is Dress Up as a Decades Day. Next week is the Carnival, March 22nd, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. on our backfield, which is, I believe, that direction. We've got each grade from 7th to 12th has three booths, two carnival booths and a food booth. And we also have student vendors. Our parent-teacher organization is going to be there. So you guys and everyone else here, if your March 22nd is free, I recommend you go. And lastly, Drama Club is in the process of rehearsing Mean Girls, which is going to be showing the last weekend of April. And one of the meetings that we had, not only as a club, but also with the parents of a lot of the Drama students, is what venue we're going to use. Because of the unfortunate situation with the South Auditorium, we're currently in the search for a couple of different venues to see which one would work out best for us. So far, the Sutter Theater on Plumb Street has offered their doors to us, as well as we are looking at getting into the 530 Center. So we're crossing our fingers for at least one of those that way we can still show the amazing show. And again, if you guys are available, and I'll mention it again at the next board meeting, please go watch that. It is amazing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Now we have North and South Lindhurst High School. So now is the opportunity for employer organizations to address the Board, Marysville Unified Teachers Association.
Good evening, Mr. Davis, Board, everybody here with us, both in person and virtually. A couple of things real quick. First off, Angela Stiegel, President for the Marysville Unified Teachers Association. First, we want to start with our very deep, heartfelt, sincere condolences to the family of Shane Bun and to the Lindhurst High School staff and students, as well as the entire Lindhurst community. That is a loss that is going to be felt for a very long time on that campus and within that community. Also, I would like to extend a very hearty congratulations and job very, very well done to all of the people who worked on the Strategic Arts Plan, a very large, kind of massive undertaking that we have seen come through a couple iterations of. I know there have been a couple of small revisions made, too. It's back on the agenda this evening, and so I would urge the Board's support of that and the approval for. A lot of people put a lot of hours into that, including a lot of our UDA folks. That deserve a lot of recognition for it, including some who happen to be sitting right over here. So Chrissy Slay Garcia and Becky Stewart, along with a lot of their cohorts and colleagues, worked a lot of hours on that. Additionally, one other thing, just to kind of bring to the forefront. I know I mention it once in a while, but with the students come up and speaking about what's going on at our various high school campuses, I would just like to encourage the Board members to reach out to the activities and athletics directors at our high schools. If you ever have some free time, if you ever are like, you know what? I just have a couple hours in an afternoon free, or, you know, it happens to be soccer season, and I played when I was in school, or anything like that, reach out to those folks. There are always volunteer opportunities there that we could use a hand. And oftentimes, even if you happen to think of it that afternoon, maybe another meeting falls through, and you're like, hey, here's two hours I didn't know I had. Reach out to them. There are a lot of opportunities for you to be involved and to come see a lot of things that our students are doing, as well as a lot of the amazing things our staff members are doing. So just a thought there, especially as it looks like maybe the weather is improving. Maybe it'll hold out for an hour or two. A couple of other things also this evening. I'm kind of shifting gears just a little bit. I know that SiteLogic is on the agenda for this evening, and it's something that I kind of keep forgetting to reach out to Jennifer Pasalia and Doug Trower about. There are a few kind of safety issues that have come up with some of the SiteLogic stuff that I know is completely, you know, unintentional kind of thing. I think some of it has to do maybe with timers. I think maybe some of it has to do with, you know, solar power and that kind of thing. But I'm hoping that I can reach out to them because, for instance, like with our parking lots now, with all the solar panels over them, very, very dark. I worked football games this year out at Marysville High School Stadium, and we had instances where our security people didn't even want to go out there to try to see what was going on in the parking lot because it was so dark. And so, like I said, completely unintended consequences. It's nothing that, you know, like SiteLogic is doing wrong or anything like that. It's just some of those things. You got big projects going on, and so some of us that basically live at these sites, morning, noon, and night, we notice some of these things. I go by here and some of our other sites at late hours and such and notice some of these things. So I will get together with them, but just something also to kind of bring to your attention. Additionally, I believe that there was kind of an agenda fluke, oops, in regards to closed session. And so hopefully, that's something that we can make sure we get resolved for next time because that's kind of been a couple of board meetings now where there have been things that haven't been put on the public agenda that should have been or that ended up going through. So some of those things that we can hopefully kind of get cleaned up because I don't think any of us want to be in the midst of Brown Act violations or anything like that. So couple those deals with like dotting our i's, crossing our t's kind of thing. If I had caught it earlier, unfortunately, some of you know I've been sick and under the weather. If I had caught it earlier, I would have reached out, but I literally did not realize it until this afternoon. So try to kind of help each other out there. Additionally, with the Computer Science Supplemental Credential Authorization, kind of getting into a little more kind of serious topic here. That whole entire situation with the additional authorization, I realize, coming from, you know, what we call a good place, I get that. But like oftentimes happens around here, it also comes up kind of last minute, and then the teachers' union is told, you know, here's something we need to get done, and we need to hurry up and get it done today. And I would implore the district and the Board both to realize that every single member of the bargaining team from UDA has full-time jobs here. And so when you bring something to the union president, who's also on bargaining, at noon on one day, and we're told, here, this is something that actually should be negotiated, and we should go through and talk about this, but I need this within the next two hours. That's not how we should be doing things. And even if something, an idea, a project, a plan is coming from a good place, that has a tendency then to really turn things, and then things become negative. And I don't like to get up here and tell you that these things are going on, but they are. And so then, when we have to basically beg and plead to be given until the next day to actually be able to sit down as a bargaining team and look at the documentation we're being given and what's happening, and we're told, okay, fine, you can have until, you know, late tomorrow afternoon. And then the next day, in the midst of sitting at the, you know, school services budget workshop at Sacramento, I'm on the phone with my bargaining team, texting away, calling back and forth, trying to get things done. And then in the middle of that, plug is pulled on the negotiations for it, and it's just sent out. That creates problems. And it's really, when you get down to it, it's bad faith bargaining, which does nothing to really, you know, help a situation along. And then to add insult to injury, to have the district then tell my unit members that that never happened and that, you know, oh, no, we were never going to charge the teachers if they had to withdraw from the program. That becomes an even bigger problem. And I could tell you with all certainty that that happened. I have the document in my hand even. And so this is not how I per se want to do business, and this is not exactly what I enjoy doing either, is getting up in the middle of a board meeting and saying, can we please stop these things? Like, there are things that have to be negotiated, and there are things, a lot of things that should be negotiated, that aren't. We're just getting steamrolled and barreled over like every turn. And that's where we end up with things being really quite difficult at the bargaining table. We end up with cease and desist being filed. We end up with grievances being filed. We end up with unfair labor practice charges. And I just, I have to tell you, and it's, it's not going to sound very pleasant, so hold on to your socks. I don't mean it as horrible as it sounds, but, you know what? This union is not going to stand for it. I'm not going to stand for it. My bargaining team's not going to stand for it. My unit isn't going to stand for it. We have rights. And so it's getting really difficult to keep trying to assert those rights and have people completely ignoring them, and people who shouldn't. And so along those same lines, you know, speaking about the sex ed, the teachers' union, that was supposed to be negotiated with the teachers' union as far as our employees, our unit members doing that. We were supposed to see the curriculum. Isn't it interesting that the union president, who also sits on the curriculum consulting team, hasn't seen it either, after requesting it three times? And there's nothing in the legislation that says you can't teach abstinence. It says that you can't teach abstinence all by its little lonesome, that it has to be taught in concert and coordination with other methods and other, you know, means. But this, this is where the problem lies, is, you know, you have to stop ignoring this unit, and you have to stop acting like our negotiations and our rights as a bargaining unit don't matter. And so on a closing note as well, I noticed that the health aides are back on the agenda. And we're talking about yet again the elimination of the health aides. And I have two things on that. One is the fact that this Board and this district said months ago, when this came up and it was tabled, that they were going to do everything in their power to try to find another way to fund the health aides. I haven't seen hide nor hair of any effort on that front, for one. And for two, I will also say that I think it quite interesting, and that's, I'll be diplomatic. I think it's interesting that the elimination of the health aides comes back the week after we had a bond vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Operating Engineers Local Union Number Three.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Rizzoni, my name is Carl Carr with Operating Engineers Local Three. Thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight. Like was just, what was just mentioned, there's an agenda item set for later regarding the layoffs of health aides. I understand the process that the ed code prescribes when it comes to the possible layoffs of classified employees. And I know that we've been going through that process and mutually moving through it, trying to find a way to keep these workers working here at the district, and I appreciate that, and hopefully that is what happens. But also, I'm here again tonight to ask that you direct staff to try and find alternate funding to keep the health aides as health aides. It is what would be best for the district. It's what would be best for the school sites, the community, and most importantly, it's what would be best for the kids. So again, there's, there are grants out there that could be found. There's other ways to find funding for these health aides. And I'm just asking you again tonight, if you could direct staff to really dig down and try to find that funding to keep the health aides as health aides. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have California School Employees Association is number 326 and 648. Association of Management and Confidential Employees, Supervisory Unit. Now we're at Presentation 10.1, CSTEM Program and LHS Engineering Faculty Presentation.
I'd like to invite the people who helped put this together, Dr. Grant, Nikki Griminger, Constance Franklin, and Crystal Richards, if you wouldn't mind just coming up maybe to the front and introducing the video, and then we'll, we'll turn it on and take questions, should there be any.
Hello, everyone. I am Constance Franklin, a second-grade teacher at Johnson Park Elementary.
I'm Crystal Richards. I teach second grade at Johnson Park.
And I'm Nikki Griminger. I teach sixth grade at McKenna.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Rizzoni, Board of Trustees, and the MJUSD community. My name is Nikki Griminger, and today, along with my colleagues Constance Franklin and Crystal Richards, we will share our work around implementing STEM in our schools with a focus on engineering, math, and science. Know that we are also doing the work around STEAM with the Strategic Arts Plan being presented today and the work with STREAM that is focused on reading and literacy across all grades. Today, our presentation will cover the why of this work. Why did MJUSD teachers and administrators start this journey? What are the employment needs in this county that support the training and education we need to provide our students? And finally, what is the roadmap for this preparation, including the courses and supports we are providing to make this happen across our district? These key questions guide our thinking and actions regardless of the academic content we are teaching.
Hello, my name is Constance Franklin. I've been a teacher with MJUSD for eight years. My current role is as a second-grade teacher at Johnson Park Elementary. My career in STEM education began this past summer after enrolling in a workshop through Summer of CS. This workshop entitled Elementary Computing for This workshop entitled Elementary Computing for All gave me a deeper look into the world of computer science, coding and robotics. I learned how to use a program appropriate for my little second graders and began implementing what was learned in my classroom and after school club right away. I saw engagement and excitement level up and I knew I needed to learn more. After doing extensive research, I found a program through UC Davis that offered teachers a supplementary C-STEM authorization to be added to their credentials. I sought to pay for it myself until a site visit with Dr. Fall Azroni occurred. That day, very casually, I shared with her my vision and drive for STEM education and I shared details of the coursework available through the partnership with UC Davis and UC Riverside. And within months, we are here today. Thank you, Dr. Azroni, for listening and valuing your teacher's input.
Here is a list of jobs that are making five to six-figure salaries and require extensive STEM and engineering skills, such as the driverless car engineer, the drone operator, the esports game coach, the cloud architect. Not to miss that one of the jobs that makes a lot of money is the online profile dating writer and the social media influencer, to name a few. Over the past decade, we have talked about the five Cs as critical skills needed for success in the 21st century. These are collaboration, communication, creativity and innovation, critical thinking and citizenship and global thinking. This chart shows the leadership competencies needed for success in today's job market. Please check through the list to see the difference. In the last 20 years, negotiations, digital literacy, complex problem solving, emotional intelligence are a few to note here. The list on this slide identifies the employers in Yuba County heavily focused on the STEM fields. Twice as many Americans use computer skills in their jobs than previously reported and half of those are in non-STEM fields such as agriculture, fashion and banking. California lags behind the national average and behind 40 other states in the percentage of high schools offering at least one computer science course. Why a math and science pathway? Twenty-seven other states currently require high schools to offer a computer science course, with five of those states requiring a computer science course for graduation.
My name is Crystal Richards and this is my 10th year as a teacher and my seventh year teaching second grade at Johnson Park Elementary. My excitement for teaching STEM began at a conference I attended in the summer of 2022, just before the start of the school year. This presenter, Adam Welcome, empowered me to believe that anyone, regardless of experience level, can teach STEM and coding in the classroom. I was so excited to implement it as soon as we started school. And just a few months after I started STEM and coding in my classroom, we had the opportunity to start clubs in our district. I immediately knew I wanted to teach a STEM and coding club and can proudly say this is now year two of our club at Johnson Park. My advice to other teachers is to give STEM and coding a try in your classroom. You will find that many students already have some level of experience and will be engaged. They will have fun without realizing they are learning. The conversation to start coding and robotics in MJUSD started during the 2021-2022 school year, when principals from the Six Foothill Schools in Arbogah first took the lead to offer coding and robotics electives. Loma Rica students even identified themselves as the coding hub of the district. In March 2021, a large group of teachers from these seven schools held a workshop to get a deeper understanding on what this would look like. For the past few years, several teachers have been offering coding in their classrooms. Most notably, at Johnson Park and McKenna, teacher leaders took the lead to bring the C-STEM program and the C-STEM credential to benefit all teachers in the district. The district worked with UC Davis and the Commission on Teacher Credentialing to get a three-year grant that totals approximately $400,000 to pay for these courses and the CTC credential for every teacher who completes the supplemental C-STEM credential. Currently, 21 teachers are in the program with an additional 22 starting at the end of March. Cohort Two for next year will be recruiting soon. Teachers earn credits that allow them to move up on their salary schedule. All certified teachers will also receive kits for their classroom. The main focus is to introduce math with coding across TK-12 with the UC Davis lessons aligned closely with the MJUSD adopted math textbooks. California Assembly Bill 2097 establishes computer science as a high school graduation requirement by the 2030-2031 school year. To prepare for this, MJUSD has started the partnership with UC Davis and the Commission on Teacher Credentialing. Rural schools are two times less likely to offer computer science courses than urban schools. To support the growth of the education system, we have identified partnerships with local businesses. The latest is the MJUSD and the Yuba Water Agency Partnership to Design Future Engineers for the Industry. At the end of this presentation, you will hear from Dr. Grant, Principal at Lindhurst High School, about the new four-year engineering pathway in partnership with UC Davis and Yuba Water Agency. This pathway will start in the fall of 2024 with incoming freshmen and will apply the actions around our collective vision of STEM and education in MJUSD.
My name is Nikki Griminger and I began my career with MJUSD in 2007. I have been teaching at Anna McKenna Intermediate School for the last eight years. When I came to McKenna, I was excited to have the opportunity to teach an elective and my immediate choice was STEAM. Over the last few years, though, I began to pivot what I was teaching in my elective and began teaching programming and coding. I used numerous free and paid programs that I found to be either limited or too costly. So in search of a new and better curriculum, I enrolled in C-STEMs Academy One through seasons of CS last summer. C-STEM's RoboBlocky curriculum and hardware-linked bots lit a fire for me. RoboBlocky's integrated learning environment checked all the boxes. It weaves together math, coding and the engineering design process. It's built for learners in grades TK through 12 with varying levels of differentiation and curriculum alignment. It also provides teachers the opportunity to create their own lessons. I've been teaching not only my elective students how to use the RoboBlocky's computer science curriculum, but also my math students with their math curriculum. In both subjects, I have seen increased engagement and confidence from my more reluctant learners. I've seen shifts from fixed mindsets of I don't like math, this is too hard, to growth mindsets of what are we learning today and how can I do better? I've also seen academic growth in both fundamental skill mastery to language and vocabulary use. Our district's development of a STEM pathway is going to provide our students with 21st century technology skills they need to build successful careers and I'm so proud of what we've accomplished so far. The C-STEM journey will come with a lot of support. Given that we have received some grant funds, we were able to attend the conferences listed here, as well as pay for the supplemental credentials and all associated fees for teachers, and continue further visits and collaborative learning with colleagues from other districts.
As we continue to expand student access to coding and robotics across grades TK through 12, the list here highlights actions we have committed to complete. Coding and robotics is not only impactful in mathematics. The picture on the right was taken in one of our kindergarten classrooms where students are engaging in problem solving with Ozobots and developing advanced language skills using terms like calibration, sensors and coding speeds. This simple image speaks volumes to the overall learning impacts of high-quality STEM education. Thank you for your time. We will now take any questions that you might have.
Did you want to say anything, Dr. Grant?
He's got the next presentation and then you can take questions.
We're going to roll into another video. We're super excited to host the Engineering Academy Pathway, Project Rise at Lindhurst High School. There's a little bit about it and then we'll take collective questions and comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. It is my pleasure to present a new and exciting STEM program coming to Lindhurst High School, Project Rise. My name is Dr. Merrill Grant, Principal of Lindhurst High School. This program will be the culminating jewel of students' experiences in coding and robotics instruction currently underway throughout the district. This grassroots program conceived and led by teachers is a game changer. LHS enrolls approximately 1,250 students in grades nine through 12. Lindhurst serves the diverse communities of all of Hurst and Linda in Yuba County, almost 35 miles outside or north of Sacramento. Lindhurst is one of Yuba County's most diverse high schools, with over 80% of our students qualifying as socio-economically disadvantaged. The highest percentage of students is our Hispanic subgroup at 57%, followed by white at 18%, and Asian mom at 14%. 4% of our students list two or more races and 3% are African-American. As you can see, the large majority of Lindhurst students are impoverished children of color, over 80%. Importantly, they also align with four out of our five priority populations identified by the K-16 Collaborative. On the CTE side of the house, Lindhurst has a long and accomplished history of operating outstanding CTE programs. However, this is the school's first four-year pathway designed to enroll students into four-year colleges and universities. With Project Rise, LHS takes the helm in leading a STEM-focused TK-through-12 initiative across the district. Students start in TK and progress through the years, ending with this four-year pathway. We also know that along the way, other interests like drone technology, ag sciences, biosciences will add to this learning. Project Rise stands for Regional Innovation for Science and Engineering. The vision for Project Rise is to provide students a rigorous educational experience to deepen understanding and know-how in STEM-related fields with an emphasis on coding and robotics and mathematics. We have four key partners supporting this new math and engineering pathway, first of whom is the UC Davis C-STEM Center. The courses and model operated by UC Davis C-STEM Center is a UC-approved educational preparation program for undergraduate admission. The benefits to Lindhurst students who complete the program will be that their rigorous learning experience will be recognized in the UC admissions process as one that explicitly prepares students for university coursework in STEM engineering. We all, we have also secured a formal partnership with the Yuba Water Agency and have been assigned a current Yuba Water Agency engineer to help design, guide and support this mode. We are also excited to have partnered with the K-16 Sacramento Collaborative, specifically the Engineering Computing Pathways Work Group. We are also eager to add partnership with dual enrollment and priority student populations and to support your work group vision and milestones. Finally, with the JROTC on campus, we look forward to integrating drone technology and other sciences to support the collaboration. The K-16 Collaborative has provided grant funds to support this work. As Rise designs the pipeline, our goal is to backward map TK-through-12 math and science courses and include hands-on experiential learning to make science come alive. While coding and robotics is expanding across the district, we must prepare exciting courses to expand rigorous and exciting options within the engineering pathways, infusing real-world learning through internships and field trips. Student engagement in work-based learning experiences that simulate real-world work being completed by industry professionals through the guidance of our industry partners like the Yuba Water Agency and Ms. Sammy Knoll sets this pathway apart. The leadership, collaboration and creativity demonstrated by our partners and teacher leaders is commendable. Here's a brief overview of the four years participating students will experience in this program. Beginning next school year, 2425, Lindhurst plans to identify two cohorts of students, approximately 30 in each. Students will take a new course, offering Integrated Math One with Coding, or IM Coding. Additionally, a new elective will be developed and offered, Computer Science with Robotics. You can then see IM Two with Coding in Grade 10, along with a new elective course called Engineering Design. Grade 11 will be IM Three with Coding and AP Computer Science Principles with Robotics. And Grade 12 students may pursue different options for advanced-level mathematics depending on their specific goals. As previously shared with the board, MJUSD was recently awarded the Computer Science Supplementary Authorization Incentive Grant by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing to help train and support teachers who in turn will bring high levels of engagement and learning to students in grades TK through 12. In turn, these district-wide learning experiences for both teachers and students will lead to students enrolling in Lindhurst's new engineering pathway. The future is bright at Lindhurst High School, a school on the move.
The one question I have for any of the presenters is the grade point average. Is there a minimum grade point average that you're requiring to get engaged with this?
Not necessarily. We're looking for interest.
At the mic.
We, we want motivated kids that, that can get in this pathway and succeed. No real minimum grade point average. Many of our honors kids coming out of Yuba Gardens and Arbogah have signed up. We have 54 signups already without even really promoting it at each middle school. We want to run two cohorts of 30s. So it's open to all. We just want to coach them up and if they have motivation, we'll work with them.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Just a real quick question on the drone technology. Have you guys considered offering students the Part 107 FAA license? Something to consider?
We mentioned junior ROTC, so if that ties into that in some manner, absolutely. We're looking for that partnership to really blossom and come together.
So, thank you.
Any other questions?
Not, not a question, but just a comment. I, I think, I think I appreciate a lot of the effort that the parents, not parents, the teachers are putting into this engineering curriculum. I think from my own experience, I think trying to do machine design and not knowing what a clevis pen is and doing load calc's on a clevis pen, graduating from Lindhurst, not having a pathway and the background for engineering, I think this is very exciting for me. And I think for me, one of the, the saddest thing for me to see was when Bill O'Forster Base was eliminated for the competition of being in Cyber Command. Because Bill O'Forster Base was one of the few bases that was on the shortlist to have Cyber Command. And in the note, the military noted that the area could not produce individuals to sustain a Cyber Command at Lindhurst, not at, at Bill O'Forster Base. So they ended up going somewhere else. And for me, 20 years later, watching this, just excitement, the direction we're going and to see the dedication that the teachers are putting in, especially on the weekends to actually accomplish this. So I just want to give a gratitude for everybody that's working towards this.
Thank you very much. Now we're at another presentation. This one's on the Marysville Strategic Arts Plan for 2023 to 2028. Does anybody want to introduce this?
Good evening. Tonight, we have two fabulous music teachers in our district. We have Kristy Slay Garcia and Rebecca Stewart, who is going to talk a little bit about the changes, the updates to the Strategic Arts Plan.
Hello, my name is Becky Stewart and I will be walking you through the revisions to the MJUSD Strategic Arts Plan. On the front cover, we replaced the statement Prop 28 and beyond with our vision statement. In the executive summary, we added a powerful statement of commitment from Marysville Joint Unified School District to offer and maintain a fully and highly functioning arts education program at every school site within the district. We also added a bullet point to our action plan, which will now include making marching band and dance eligible for PE credit to help grow our programs. At the bottom, we have highlighted the annual district-wide performance events that are in partnership with community arts foundations and district leadership. We've also added the goal of implementing summer camps to extend learning opportunities for students within the district that are already enrolled in music and arts classes. Within the mission statement, we have added Identify Multiple Ways to Increase Student Participation and Retention in the Arts. Our implementation plan has changed from a three-year implementation plan to a three-phase, five-year implementation plan. Within Equity and Access in the Music Department, we have added Begin String Programs at Elementary Sites and Add Magical Choir at High School Sites. Sites and Add Magical Choir at High School Sites to Phase One. Under Phase Two, we have added Continue Strings Programs at Elementary Sites, Begin Strings Programs at Middle School Sites, and Establish an Annual MJUSD Honor Choir for Secondary Sites. Under Phase Three, we have added Continue Strings Programs at Elementary and Middle School Sites and Begin Strings Programs at High School Sites. Within Equity and Access in Visual Arts, under Phase One, we have added Establish Community Partnerships to Promote the Arts at Events to Allow More Students to Demonstrate Their Talents in Our Community. And lastly, in the section Site-Specific Needs, we have specified, in addition to current offerings as demonstrated by site, FAPA staff, and administrators.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for this team? I think she approves it. Well, I know this has been a long time coming, and nothing like this happens overnight. And I know you guys have really pushed the envelope to bring a robust arts and music program to this district, and we really appreciate everything that you've done. And seeing your music presentations at concerts have just been mind-blowing. And we certainly appreciate all the kids that you've instructed and enhanced and moved forward in getting involved in the music and the arts programs. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Luke Henderson. I'm the Program Coordinator for the Learning Communities for School Success Program at Yuba County Office of Education. Learning Communities for School Success Program, also known as LCSSP, is a three-year grant funded through the CDE, where you're here to combat chronic absenteeism, bolster school connectedness, and reduce dropout rates and suspensions. At Yuba County Office of Education, we believe in a wraparound support. We want to prioritize the well-being and success of our students and our families. We are hands-on when addressing the barriers, and we make sure to assess, to truly see what barriers are keeping them from coming to school and being in front of the amazing staff that you employ at MJUSD. The continued support and warm handoff model is what makes our services unique, and that can look a lot of different ways, whether that's filling our trunk with food and delivering it to families, helping a parent get long-term employment, connecting them to physical and mental health agencies to make sure that they're getting the continued support afterwards. A few of these are a brief snapshot of what we do, but really, it's all-encompassing. Maybe it's rental assistance, is it transportation to school, is it the fact that they need a safe place once they're there? All of these take a pivotal role when it comes to making sure that our students are here and in class and learning. We are working diligently to implement effective interventions and reinforce support structures that empower students to stay on track and be successful. So on this slide, we have a brief breakdown of our budget. We are on track to expend all of our funds by the end of our grant term in twenty-twenty-five. Now, last year was our implementation year, so we do have some outcomes for how our services went for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. It showcases that, on average, we had a four-point-one percent increase in attendance, ninety-four percent of participants felt stronger connections to their school sites, and eighty-nine percent of students had a decrease in suspensions, or disciplinary write-ups, or even documented behavior incidents. And overall, we saw an eighty-four percent success rate. So the kids that were being referred for the services in LCSSP, they were feeling more connected to your schools. They are able to get there and learn and feel empowered and use their voices. We were able to negate the barriers that were keeping them there. And all of this was through the interventions that we're doing and making sure that we are consistently following up and making sure that that warm handoff is being made so that they actually make sure that those services are being met and those barriers are being So last school year, we serviced seventeen school sites across Yuba County. An interesting number here is it looks like the largest number of our students that we served happened to be in third, fourth, and fifth grade. You can also see a breakdown of some of the schools that referred the most amount of students, being Edgewater and Arboga. So this slide is really a breakdown of what our referrals looked like in the school year twenty-two and twenty-three. The most common referral was for five or more reasons, which showed us just how needed the direct support we offer in LCSSP is for your district. We found that with the data that we collected, the barriers that are presented to our community and our families and the instances that they're in, they're paramount, and it snowballs. It has an effect on the student's grade. It has an effect on how they're behaving in the classrooms. It transcends from the entire holistic approach and well-being of the student, all of these kind of snowball and make their experience even harder. It has to be a direct approach till we break down those barriers and we are consistent support, SEL support. It's a holistic approach. So after talking about twenty-two, twenty-three, we want to go into twenty-three, twenty-four. How is the program doing this year? We know how it went last year. We learned and we evolved. This year, we are currently servicing one-hundred-and-eighty students, which we're already on track to service twice as many as we did during implementation year. The data you see on this slide shows the one-on-one therapeutic services offered by our LMFT, as well as the overall numbers of the program. We utilize the California Evidence-Based Clearinghouse for Child Welfare Youth Outcome Questionnaire to compile each student's symptom scores. We have found a steady decline in symptom scores for students receiving our program's therapeutic services, the average being a fifty-three percent decline. The students in your district have shown that the three main symptom categories that they're identifying with is behavioral dysfunction, somatic symptoms, and intrapersonal distress. They're feeling anxious. They're feeling early onset depression. They're needing ways to learn, to cope, and strategies to make sure that they are being successful in the classroom. We have found with the one-on-one support and therapy that we provide through LCSSP that these barriers have been negated, and they're learning, and they're utilizing the tools that they are learning. So this slide is a little busy. This is a referral breakdown for this school year. It reflects the hundred-and-ten referrals for direct services that we received, but this does not include numbers for the groups that we provided at your school sites or our therapeutic services. We've categorized our referral services into four main areas of service: absenteeism, school connectedness, behavior, and community resources. I compiled this data point to share with you per admin request, but more importantly, to give a snapshot. What are the needs of our students? What are we finding now? We can see that absenteeism is the highest referred reason, but behavior and community resources are not far behind. It also showcases how intertwined these four areas of services are and how they all play a part in the student's overall success. In LCSSP, we are diligently working to implement effective interventions and reinforce support structures that empower students to stay on track and be successful. Here are some of the quotes from the administrators that work with us at your school sites. These are the admins that see our staff every single day. Feedback has been positive across the board. They want us there. They want to hire them. They think that the interventions are effective and they're working. They're seeing it with their students. It's translating across the board, not only relationships with staff, but relationships with families. Thank you all for your time tonight. I look forward to our future partnership, and if anyone has any questions, I'd be more than happy to take them now.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board?
Luke, are you controlling the PowerPoint? Just so that I can ask them to slide the slide back so I can ask?
Absolutely.
Yeah, could you slide back? I'm trying to reconcile something on the data. So go back to that slide?
Fair.
And so, yeah, so I'm looking at that, and I'm seeing the absentee, absenteeism, community resources, school connectedness is about half of the absenteeism, right? Thirty-five versus fourteen. And what I'm trying to reconcile is, keep on going back to the beginning where we show the LCSSP outcomes. And what I don't understand, and I'd like to just get a clarification, keep on going? Keep on going, right there. What I don't understand is the two bubbles to the left versus the three bubbles to the right, because ninety-four percent improved connections to school is phenomenal, right? But what I don't understand is why is the improved attendance rate only four-point-one percent? And why did we only approve, improve one-point-one days of attendance? So I'm trying to reconcile that because it seems from those numbers that suggests is that these students didn't have that many absent days, right? But then it doesn't align with the other slide, which shows that it's twice as much as the connectedness. And so how does that work?
So for twenty-two, twenty-three, this is a snapshot of all one-hundred-and-seventy students that we serviced throughout the school year. So on average, depending on each student, it was an increase of four-point-one percent on average. But some of those cases, yes, you can have an increase of kids with multiple days, some not so much. But really, how the program works is it's a holistic approach. So if they're referred for just absenteeism, then we are trying to get them into their seats. We want them there. What's keeping you from going and breaking down those barriers? But if it's also feeling connected to the school site and having a safe place to go for when you need a reset, so you don't ditch, you don't leave school, you don't just leave and not come back, you have a safe place to go, that's part of feeling connected to school and having those resources. So that's where a lot of that comes from, or our SEL support, all of our groups that we do, our proven interventions, the Boys Circle, the Girls Circle, all of our trauma-informed care, that also comes from where we go into our behavior and our school connectedness piece. So again, this is just collective data of all one-hundred-and-seventy kids, as far as what was the overall percentage change with all of the kids that we utilized or were in the program. This was from year twenty-two, twenty-three. There were a few data points later on in the presentation where we were just isolating this school year, so a snapshot of August to January.
But that doesn't answer my question. The one-point-one days, I understand it's an average, so there's only one-hundred-and-seventy kids. So if you drop the point-one, if I have one-hundred-and-seventy kids and one person misses one-hundred-and-seventy days and everybody else misses zero days, the average is one, right? So what I don't understand is why is the increased days of attendance so slow and the approved attendance rate so slow versus the three bubbles that's to the right? Does that make sense, right?
Yeah, and it's how we go about collecting the data, so you're right. When we look at school connectedness and we look at the reductions and reductions of suspensions, where we're pulling that data from? So when you're looking at it on Aries, it is very clear, this is how many days that they were enrolled, so on, so forth. And we measure that from when the intervention started to when it ended as well. So being in a quantitative measure, that was an overall.
One of the pieces, Dr. Yang, to look at, sorry. One of the pieces to look at, too, is for attendance. We're talking, if the kid, let's say they weren't attending very well, and they're at like seventy-four percent. When we see a four percent increase, that means they're up at seventy-eight percent. So it's not necessarily, very few kids are at zero. So again, a kid is at zero percent, while obviously we're going to see a much bigger increase. And then the days of attendance increase is looking at before the intervention and then after. So if they got halfway through the years, let's say we're at ninety days, we're looking at the ninety days before and then the ninety days after. So that's the change in the increase. And this was also during our implementation, so it wasn't over the course of the whole year. We didn't really get up and going until about, really kind of January, February is when we actually started getting some of the programs in place last year.
Okay, got it. And so the expectation would be is that the program for twenty-three, twenty-four, we would see more than one day. Because exactly, your answer makes it worse, because one day of four percent of that, that's twenty-five days, right? So twenty-five times four is one hundred. So that, your explanation actually makes it worse, because we're talking about one day gained from twenty-five days of absenteeism.
It's just that overall, if we're looking at the two pieces, if we looked at the ninety days before and the ninety days after, we see an increase. They're coming one more day than they came before. It's, again, we're hoping that next year, we're going to have a much better sample size because we're working with the kids over the course of the whole year. It is hard to intervene when the kids, when they're coming in in March, and they've already, they're pretty deep in the hole, and the habits are pretty well-established, and then our ability to get resources in place and have that outcome, we just didn't have enough of a lead time with some of those change in behaviors.
So is the assumption that what I stated is true, then? The expectation for twenty-three, twenty-four is that it's going to be a drastic different number?
Correct. We should see a much better increase in terms of the number, and we also have LCSSP attached to our SAR board, so we're referring kids directly from there as well. And so we're trying to contact those kids and get them connected sooner, and again, a lot more of the programs in place than they had last year. Yes, we'll see better data, I think, next year.
Okay.
If we don't, I think you're right to be concerned. I would be concerned as well if we don't see.
The only reason why I say that is that if you, I understand that the program has multiple outcomes, but if it was judged purely on the days attended, the cost per student is about thirty-eight hundred bucks. I'm going to take the libertarian argument and say, we would have a better outcome if we'd have just given those kids that thirty-eight hundred bucks.
I think if we could give kids directly money, if you can figure out a way of doing that, I would love to have that as an incentive program, because I think I have a bunch of kids that would be willing to do that as well.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Well, the one question I have for you is, UC, chronic absenteeism several places, and so it looks like you're double-counting in some of the categories, and how do you, what's a pure absenteeism and what's a not-so-absenteeism?
Are you referring to the slide here?
Well, yeah, that's, you know, absenteeism, absenteeism, behavior, absenteeism, behavior.
Right, absolutely.
How do you do that?
So this was referral breakdown. So as you can see, we serviced one-hundred-and-forty-eight students in MJUSD. This is a referral breakdown for the hundred-and-ten that were referred for direct services from a prevention specialist. So they were the ones that were getting help with absenteeism, behavior, school connectedness, and community resources. And what this breakdown is, is each individual referral. So up at the top, you have absenteeism for thirty-five. We got thirty-five referrals from MJUSD that was just, this kid needs help with absenteeism. Six referrals for absenteeism and behavior. And the total number goes up to one-hundred-and-ten.
Could that be the same student?
They're individual students. No. Mr. Davis, they're not the same student. They're not, they're different students. So we have thirty-five individuals that were referred just for absenteeism. We had another six that were referred because they had problems with absenteeism, but they also had problems with behavior. It's not the same students.
Okay, all right. That makes it a little easier to make sense of it. But, I mean, this is a lot of data to work through, and we certainly appreciate the effort to present it. We'll just have to do a little more digestion of it. But certainly, it appears that we're moving in the right direction, if I'm understanding it.
We are. We are trending. We are. We are trending in a positive direction. The outcomes and interventions as far as when we're talking about attendance and having kids come to school more and get those days reoccurring where they're coming every single day. We're finding that those numbers this year are bolstered. We typically do, we compile all of the data at the end of the year because again, we monitor after the intervention ends. So when I come back in the summer or after the fact, I should have all of the percentiles as far as the amount of days for the kids serviced at M J O S D as well.
We look forward to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're at presentation with Christie White and Associates. Jennifer, are you going to present that?
I am not, but I'm going to introduce Heather Rubio. She's our independent auditor from Christie White and Associates. And she will present our twenty-two, twenty-three financials. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, can you guys all hear me? Hello?
I think we can hear you.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Okay, again, I'm Heather Rubio. I'm the lead auditor on the Marysville Joint Unified School District for the fiscal year ending June thirty, twenty-twenty-three. I will be doing a high-level overview of the audit, which is our opinion, and some of the work we do to get those opinions. And then if you have any specific questions on the report or any of our procedures, I'd be happy to answer them. Start off, on page one of the audit report, we have the auditor's opinion. And in there, we say that in our opinion, and we believe the information presented to you, which was your unaudited actuals of twenty-twenty-three is when you first saw them. So a while back now, right, your unaudited actuals. And then we take those and we audit them and we do a number of procedures. And then we determine if we agree with those numbers or if there needs to be adjustments. And we are happy to say that we had no material adjustments and we believe that the numbers are materially correct based on our procedures. So you, as a district, received an unmodified opinion, which is the best possible opinion you can get on the financial statements. But to go into a little bit, how did we determine that? So those numbers you get in the unaudited actuals, we are looking at. So for example, when the district says cash is ten million, we verify that, one, that there's a reconciliation done monthly. And two, that there's actually ten million in your county treasury or whatever your revolving cash, any of your bank accounts, we confirm them. Accounts receivable, that's the money you're getting from a number of agents, agencies, from the C D E, Department of Agriculture. And we are verifying in your L C F F calculations. And we are verifying all those numbers, those revenues and those accounts, and making sure that they are recorded correctly. Same thing with your capital assets, your accounts payable, your associated student bodies, verifying those bank accounts, the amounts recorded, your bonds, any other debt that you have. And then overall, the process of your journal entries. And we work really closely with the district to make sure that we are able to validate those numbers. What does that mean for the district? That means we're pulling a large number of samples and they are, I say we are pulling, the district is pulling. We are asking for the samples and the district is pulling all that information we're asking for. It's highly detailed. And I'm happy to say we did not come across any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or instances of non-compliance material to financial statements. Because you're a school district and you receive federal funds, and because you spent over around twenty-seven million in federal funds, you're also subject to a single audit. And we selected two programs this year, your education stabilization funds, E S R and G I R. And that's around ten million, and your child nutrition funds. And I'm sorry I didn't put the amount in. This is, comes directly from the federal government of what we have to look at. And it's pretty specific. And with these monies, you're only allowed to spend them on certain things. You can only charge certain number of indirect costs. And there is reporting associated with that. And all of that is checked in high level of detail. And any instances, you know, the federal government won't want any of their money back that's not spent correctly. And I am happy to say that you received an unmodified opinion for your federal program. So we did not have any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. The third piece is, again, because you're a school district and you're receiving funds from the state, the state puts together an audit guide every single year based on any changes in legislation, your assembly bills, your senate bills. And for example, what will be in the audit next year will be your ELOP funds. And this was your distance learning during COVID. This is those ratios, classroom teacher salaries, instructional time, your comprehensive school safety plans, Williams-Corti complaints, student, your S A R X, I think, your student accountability report cards, so all those type of things. A really hard area to get a perfect score. One, because this information's changing all the time. It changes from year to year. It's pretty detailed as to how the state wants to audit, so there's a number of procedures you have to go through. You received an unmodified opinion, so overall you did great. No significant deficiencies or material weaknesses overall, but just one finding. And there was a finding related, oh, I'll go into that in a second. I wanted to just highlight your long-term debt. There was an increase from last year. And that main reason was your net pension liability. This is your state teachers' retirement and your public retirement, so your STURS and your PERS. Those numbers, I just wanted to point out, are based off an actual study. The district clearly doesn't have any control over, really, the district has no control over this liability. And so that just depends on how the market's doing and how those investments for the state retirement system is going. And so at the end of June thirty, twenty-twenty-three, that liability went up. And so that is the result, that is the reason for the major increase in your long-term debt. I just wanted to point that out. And then, so back to the finding that we came across, instructional time. We found that at one of your school sites, at the charter from grades nine to twelve, you were short by twenty-three minutes. And I think it was related to how passing periods were counted. And so that was the, and when I say twenty-three minutes, I mean throughout the whole year. So the requirement is sixty-four thousand minutes. And you guys were at sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven minutes. And I believe this has been corrected. I'm going to stop sharing and then see if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. The question I have for you, when you find a deficiency, like, you know, we're short twenty-three minutes in instructional time, what does the district do to address that?
It depends on when we find it, right, at what time in year. But usually, a lot of this is found when the year is basically done. So they just address it by revising the minutes in the next year.
So how, I guess, if there's a systematic, I mean, is it something that we can fix right away? Or is it something that, I mean, how do you figure that out that we're short twenty-three minutes?
We look at the bell schedules and the school calendar, and then we have our own system. So we pull them based on a sample of your sites and then we recalculate them based on the schedule. Yeah, it's part of, it's part of the state compliance testing. It's very, yeah, very detailed. The state controller's office asks that we do that.
So, Mr. Davis, we do have our instructional minutes and bell schedules are turned into the business services department and we check them. In this particular incident, there was a change at the charter between Marysville High School. It had to do with serving times and they share the cafeteria. And the principal made an adjustment and didn't realize that the passing periods didn't count towards instructional minutes. So.
Who knew? I've never seen, I've never seen us have this kind of a problem.
Yeah, it was.
So I know M C A, they teach as much as they can.
They do.
Any other questions for, from the board, for the auditor?
Yeah, I have one question. Is it typical that we would cut it so close that one instance can put us under the required amount?
I mean, sixty-four thousand minutes is pretty typical for a high school. So.
Total, sixty-four thousand throughout, throughout the school year? And the state requirement is, and also the state requirement is sixty-four thousand minutes, correct?
And that's pretty.
So if there's any deviation to go, to going under, then we're not, we're not hitting the required amount. If there's any deviation at all throughout the year, then we have a problem.
Right.
Okay.
That would be changing your schedule. But, but if, like, you closed for a day because of some natural issue, that's not, that wouldn't cause an issue with the minutes because you would file a waiver. Is that what you're kind of asking?
Yeah, 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 that's it.
So, yeah, so if I can, so those things do happen. And the district has the ability, and which I think they have done, is they can file a waiver for those days. And the state usually grants them.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, so those things can happen. That's, and I think you did do that last year.
Any other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I just, I want to thank the district actually, for all the, you know, the district staff. And this is kind of the audit when you're thinking bell schedules, instructional months. So we ask stuff from all the way from the sites, out at the sites and the curriculum and the business office and every kind of level of the district. So we really appreciate everybody providing everything we're asking for throughout the year.
Well, thank you. Moving on, we have the, we're at ten point five energy service program update with Site Logic. Good evening.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jennifer Butler with Site Logic. And this is your energy manager, and her name is Emily Seacrest. And she has been here for about, how long now?
Since July.
Since July. So she's here three days a week, making sure that all the technical work is being implemented to save energy, but also addressing the behavioral. So she has a full load. Before she gets started though, I would do want to thank you for your comment on the lighting issue under the solar. That is something that we can easily address with adding some lighting under the solar arrays for safety. I'll discuss it with Doug when he's ready, or not ready. Or Doug. Doug's going to give, oh, I'm in trouble with Doug.
Good evening, Doug.
So that lighting has been addressed over the last weekend. Those solar arrays for Marysville High School were put online. So the lighting underneath those panels will be on.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Because that did go.
Thank you very much.
Look at that. Okay, so just a quick update. We are actually concluding phase one of our original energy project. I'm very happy to say that when I came before you a few years ago, we talked about doing this project on time and on budget. I'm very happy to report, wow, we actually did it. So super excited. Of course, we are still looking at the second phase of putting the foothills in Cedar Lane back in. That is in the design process right now. Everything is going great and we're looking at your battery and E V charging grants for that. But all in all, it has been a very pleasant and very successful project. The savings are going to be quite incredible. As you know, we've faced some serious P G N E increases, thirty-two percent, with another one on the docket at the California Public Utility Commission in spite of record earnings from P G N E. So everything is going really, really well. You couldn't have picked a better time to do this. And we are very grateful to be here and it has been a real pleasure. The very last systems, as he mentioned, Marysville. The pool is now ready to go, Covalod is ready to go, Arboga is ready to go, and Dobbins is online. So other than those two remaining sites, we'll have everything we originally intended online, up and running. I hope you take some time every once in a while to pat yourselves on the back and enjoy that legacy of a project. And take a look at the dashboard that you'll have, that cloud-based dashboard. So any questions for me?
The one question I have with the foothill and the Cedar Lane projects, when are we expecting to break ground on those?
I would say they're in for D S A right now. So as long as they're keeping up their pace, I think we'll be able to get something done by this summer. Yeah, so we've done our geotech and all these pre-construction things and submitted to D S A.
Have we notified P G N E that we're doing this?
Oh, yes. Yes, yes, I guess.
I just know the challenges we've had with P G N E.
Oh, my goodness, yes. They are.
Yeah, yeah, one of those.
Yes.
So the other thing is there's still some fences up and there's still some porta-potties up. When do we expect to see those removed?
Actually, Doug would know better than I.
Poor Doug.
Yeah, so with the, with the construction being finished at Arboga, at Covalod and Marysville High School, those fences should come down within the next couple of weeks. And then, actually, Arboga will probably stay up a little longer. I think we're waiting for some parts to come in. But for the most part, those fences have already come down.
Good to hear.
And before I sit down, I did want to give a really special recognition to Jennifer and Doug and Summer, who works with Doug. They have been the reason why this project has been successful. They are so quick to respond. They make themselves available. They make thoughtful, well-thought-out decisions in a timely manner. And that has really allowed us to progress on schedule. And they really deserve a special accolade for, for their commitment because we have definitely used them for the last three years exhaustively. So I want to give that shout out to them, yes. Okay, on to Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And thank you, Board, for having me. So my name's Emily Seacrest. And as Jennifer said, I manage the day-to-day operations for the Marysville Energy Management Program. I just have a brief overview of the scope here. But I'm just going to say the goals of the program are to reduce the energy costs, to save unnecessary emissions, and then to educate students and staff about energy management. So I'm going to start with some updates. This is for the year-to-date of this year, and it is compared to our baseline year, which is twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen. So to start off, total electricity usage has gone down by twelve percent. And so that's the difference in size you see of the bars there. And then also since twenty-eighteen, twenty-nineteen, we have had a lot of solar come online, which is amazing. And so now, actually, fifty-one percent of the district's total electricity is generated onsite by those solar systems. And because of the combined solar and the reduction in usage, overall purchased electricity, the stuff we have to buy from P G N E, that's down by fifty-seven percent. So that has led to some really great cost savings as well. So this is still year-to-date and compared to the baseline year. And so to start off, we have just the, the actual energy cost savings that have been realized. So that's the difference between the light blue bars from the baseline and the orange bars from this year. So there's been two hundred and ten thousand dollars of straight-up energy cost savings. But then we also want to talk about the avoided costs. And so the solar energy savings, that would be if you had to buy that yellow chunk from P G N E, that would have cost you an additional four hundred thousand dollars. So the solar energy has definitely been a good investment. And then the avoided costs, that would be if we didn't have that twelve percent reduction in usage, you would be paying another two hundred thousand dollars. And like Jennifer mentioned, that's due to those P G N E rate increases. It's been a thirty-two percent increase just from December of last year to January of this year. And then they're going for another rate increase as well. So it's really important to keep the usage low and not just have the solar going. Additionally, the district gets a lot of utility bills. And so we monitor those, we go through them, we check them to make sure everything makes sense. And back in the fall, we actually caught an error in the billing that resulted in a hundred and twenty thousand dollars of bill credits being issued from P G N E due to overcharging on the demand at one of the high schools. So that's just something that we were able to catch as well. In addition, day-to-day, we monitor the Pelican thermostat system. And this is a really amazing system that allows us to control the H VAC in rooms on a room-by-room level. And so we can monitor it remotely, we can make changes remotely. And we can schedule any sort of after-hours events, as well as like during the intercessions. The maintenance department lets me know which rooms will be used and we can keep any unnecessary spaces off and just use the rooms that we need to. Also, all this utility information is put into our energy dashboard, which gives us a lot of metrics, a lot more than what I've talked about. You can see each year, the data back. what I've talked about. You can see each year the data back to 2018, and you can also see breakdowns on a school-by-school level. And then finally, you can kind of see some metrics where we translate that into carbon footprint, and we can see some facts there about what those savings are bringing us, not just in terms of cost, but also environmental impact. Another thing that we do is biannual site audits of all the schools. So I go and walk through each of the schools and observe kind of the day-to-day behaviors. I'm happy to say that there has been an improvement overall in the scores of the site audits from the last time until now, but there are still areas of opportunity for additional savings. So I saw a couple instances of exterior lights being on during the daytime. There's some plug loads that we can manage better, but the really big, main area of opportunity is doors being propped open during the day while the HVAC system is running. And so this is something that we're really looking to address, not just from an energy-saving standpoint, but also from a safety standpoint. And so we're talking about maybe doing a competition between the schools, get a little friendly competition going and get the kids involved in trying to make sure we keep those doors closed. And then finally, the last aspect was the student and staff education. So we make sure before any sort of extended school breaks, we send out information about how to properly shut down your classroom to make sure you're saving as much energy as possible. And we are also going to look into maybe making a video to get a little bit more attention on that. Additionally, we have these little Lights Out decals that we've distributed to all the schools within the district with a note encouraging the teachers to place it by their light switch to help them and their students remember to turn the lights off whenever they're leaving. And then additionally, we have some student educational events that are going to be coming up. I've just started coordinating these, but actually, next week, I'm going to be speaking at Cove Lard Elementary School. The, this was kind of put together because of their new solar coming online. I'm going to be speaking in six different classes there about solar energy. And so we hope to have more opportunities like that coming in the future. And that's all I had. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
So, so we would love to come back. If Dr. Fall will have us in about four months and show you with all the systems now on, you'll fall out of your seat. It's going to give you the chills. It's really amazing.
I have two newbie questions, because I wasn't here in 2001, we just got approved. The, the 12% total electricity usage drop, is that associated to just pure better behavioral management? Or is there something that we actually removed out of that system?
So that is, I think you had two sites on, and the rest is all behavioral and management through having eyes on utilities, HVAC systems, lighting systems, and working with your students and staff on how to be good champions of sustainability.
Interesting.
So it's, it's pretty good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Interesting. Yeah, when I was looking at it, I was like, 12%? What did we take out of the system?
Yeah.
So it was basically just more behavioral management in terms of the way we use our electricity?
Yeah.
And the programmable thermostats, which allow for the unoccupied setbacks, making sure everything's off for the holidays, that helps a lot as well.
Yeah.
And the silly things, even those little decals, now we're going to make one, it's actually Jen's idea, I think, of a giraffe that has its neck open or closed, depending on if the door is open or not. So just to try and encourage some more behaviors.
And then, and then, because I'm assuming that the, the, when the system was designed, the benchmark, the target of savings was from the 2018, 2019 years, since the savings are from those numbers. As an engineer to another engineer, the benchmark of success is actually how well did the system that was designed function as what you predicted? How well, how well was this close to the predicted numbers that we were predicting to save?
Yeah, so we actually have a production guarantee of an offset over the year of 90%. So once all of these are on, we will be offsetting 90% of your utility use or electricity use. And, and if not, we actually have a very robust contract with the district that says we will pay you if we don't hit that benchmark.
So, so if I understood your response correctly, so it's against the electricity usage and not against the dollar saved, then?
Correct, because we're always chasing the dollar as they continue to escalate. But what we can say is that we're going to guarantee that we'll offset 90% of your usage. And at the time, we gave that a dollar value with an escalator of 4% per year for utility. But as you know, we're not escalating at 4%.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, so is that, is that going to be similar to the, the one that we approved for the study that occurred a couple of months ago? Is it going to be 90%?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So 90% is really what California State would like us to be achieving. Back in the day, even as little as 10 years ago, they wanted about 50 to 60%. But now we're seeing that we really have much more efficient systems, and we really can offset as much as 90% or greater. I won't be surprised if, after we've done one full year, if that offset isn't greater than 90%. Just as a whole, our kind of portfolio tends to produce higher or offset greater, but that's at least the guarantee that we have for your district.
Yeah, that's, that was the other thing that I was going to ask about, since you were talking about 90% offset. Since the project has been going out for four years now, solar panel prices have gone down, and the panels are more efficient, right? And so I would assume, based on the size, the number of solar panels we have, there should be some, even, our total savings should be greater than 90%.
I assume that your fiscal savings will be much greater than what we originally anticipated. But even though the panels have come down in price and increased in efficiency, the cost of steel, labor, and construction have unfortunately continued to escalate.
Got it, got it.
So that delta that we would love to have isn't there. But I would, I am looking forward to the day where we come back and we say, we told you we were going to save X, but really, you're going to save this.
Yeah, because the question I asked was based on the benchmark of, of the
2018.
Electricity usage, right?
Yeah.
So I would assume that we would, we would clear that 90% easily.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, the other costs is, that's something else we have to consider. But purely from electricity costs' perspective, we should then clear that 90% without any issue.
Yeah, and we actually started later than 2018, but because of COVID, we didn't have a good base. So we had to go pre-COVID for the baseline of the usage, because what we saw in, once COVID hit, it wasn't consistent.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the final question for, for me, anyway, is with this new installs at, at Foothill and at Cedar Lane, will we be able to put in stronger solar panels?
Yes.
Efficient?
Yes. We're, we're always doing whatever is the most current and relevant product. One of the nice things about the solar industry is they continuously upgrade, and because most of the stuff is made on order, you do get the most recent technology. So that's really nice. Yeah.
Well, I'm certainly hoping that we, we do better than 90%.
Yes.
And I'm hoping with the addition of the Foothill project.
Yeah.
We certainly should be approaching the 100%, which we were all hoping for when we first started this. So, but thank you. And thank you, Jennifer, and Doug, for your standing here after four years. I was on the board.
Yes, you were.
Controversial. I had neighbors lining up because of solar. And God, I'm happy you're making money.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Board. Thank you.
Now we have updates by the district's departments, administrative services. Brian?
I'd just like to share that we've opened up the TKK, so that's Transitional Kindergarten and kindergarten enrollment for next year. We try to open it up as early as possible so we can start getting numbers. Transitional kindergarten next year actually opens up for all fourth, four-year-olds. Their birthday actually is, falls after July 2nd. Sorry, before July 2nd. Next year, it will be the final year of the implementation on Transitional Kindergarten. It will be all four-year-olds whose birthday, they, they tune four before September 2nd. So it will be all four-year-olds. It'll be on the same timeline that our Kinder is. While Transitional Kindergarten and kindergarten both are not required for families to send their kids to school, we are required to offer it. Transitional kindergarten right now has a hard cap in ed code of 24 students per class, and they have a student-to-adult ratio of 12 to 1. It's looking like it's going to drop down to 10 to 1 next year, so that's something we're keeping an eye on. But it is open. We're already seeing, we're already seeing enrollment coming in. We'll keep an eye on those numbers, just to see what we need next year. So, thank you.
Any questions for Brian? Thank you. Business services, Jennifer?
Thank you. I don't have any more updates for tonight. Thank you.
Okay, education services.
Yes, just wanted to highlight again our monthly report on the professional development side of the House. Importantly, something that's not listed as part of the numbers here are all the teachers who are currently participating in the computer science supplemental authorization that you heard about earlier. So for example, tonight was the last night of instruction for course one for the 21 teachers that are participating in that. So...
Are we supposed to be looking at a slide?
No.
No?
Not so much a slide, but this is just what we, what we share every, every month. It's just the professional development summary of what's happening on ed services. And so I just want to just give a highlight to the teachers who have committed to participate, not just in the professional development you see here, but also the professional development that's not listed here. And those are those teachers who are participating in the computer science work to get their supplemental authorization in that topic. That's it for ed services.
Sorry for the confusion. Any questions for Jay? Now we have personnel services?
I don't have any further updates tonight.
All right, Dr. Fall.
Thank you. It's really nice to be able to see the awards that we give our kids and our staff. I think Mr. Crawford was saying that you become used to enjoying that now, isn't it? It's the best part of the evening. I would like to clarify real quickly to a comment that was made about the closed session agenda items that were not showing up for the last couple of months. What is so fascinating is that because we get board docs and we get the printed copy, all of us saw it. But we never received any information until 8:00 this morning, when, thank you, Ms. Romero, came to my room and said, what happened to the closed agenda items? For the record, what happened is that there was an update on board docs, and it required us to go and just press a button, just a simple button that says, take it up, like, publish. But with the updates, we didn't know they had updated that button. So unfortunately, we didn't know that. But this morning at 8:00, we saw that the agenda items weren't showing up for closed session for February or for March. So it is true that it was an error. I also wanted to give a shout out to the work that's going on across the district. I think sometimes we don't take the time to thank our teacher leaders for their leadership and their vision. I think it's really important to know that a school district that moves from our teachers leading with their vision and leading with their drive is a district that sustains itself, no matter who's sitting at the table in leadership at this level or in the cabinet level. Our teachers are driving our district, and that's what we love. So I want to give a shout out to all of them for a job well done. Thank you.
Any questions for the superintendent? All right, moving on, we have approval of the February 28th, 2024 regular board meeting minutes. Are there any corrections or additions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Garrett Cridle. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion passes. Now we're at the approval of the consent agenda items. Are there any item, consent agenda items that the Board would like to pull and have further discussion? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Now we're at new business. We're at 17.1. Second read, approval and adoption of the Board Policies 5116.2, involuntary student transfers.
I, I mentioned last time that we didn't actually have a policy for involuntary student transfers. It does not happen very often. There's only particular cases where it might. And we just wanted to make sure that we had that option. And so this is the, the second, the second read and possible adoption of that policy.
Are there any questions for Brian? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Allison Hasty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Motion carries. Now we're at 19.1, Resolution Number 2023-24/10, regarding classified health aid employee layoffs for lack of work slash lack of funds, ed code section 45117. Do we have any presentation?
Yes. This evening, we're bringing forward the resolution to ask the Board to approve employee layoffs, classified. That's always a difficult time. Back when ESER funds became available, this district added a number of positions to the health aid one to help with contact tracing and so forth related to COVID. The ESER funds expire at the end of the school year, and so we're bringing forth the resolution to reduce those positions. I have met one-on-one with all of the, all but one of the impacted employees. One was not able to make it. We looked at, at different job descriptions that are available in the District of vacancies to see what they may have interest and where they would like to try to stay within the district. Now, there's two ways under ed code that an employee can, when you have a layoff, they can be displaced based on having permanency in another classification. None of our impacted employees meet that criteria, but there is a way under what's called Tucker Rights. If an employee meets the minimum qualifications for a position, then they have priority over outside candidates. And so I inform them of all of those rights, along with their union rep being there. And then, since then, the OE3 rep and I have met to talk about a process of all of those open positions so that we would, you know, assuming that the Board does approve this, we would post and to all internal candidates within the district, because some of those are higher positions. We've worked out an interview process and so on and so forth to make sure that those who want to stay within the district can do so. It just may not be in the same classification.
Are there any questions for Ms. Romero? If not, we have several public comments. Jenna Han?
Good evening, members of the Board. I'm Jenna Han. I'm the Health Aid at Ella Elementary. I've been weighing what to speak on since December. During that time, so many situations have arisen that have demonstrated the need for our jobs. These have ranged from student care and safety concerns to even staffing concerns despite the size of our current team. Since that meeting, we have yet again been asked many times on the direct care needs of our sites and the times that these direct care situations occur. They, this demonstrates they don't understand. Little Janice Diabetes doesn't care if we are available to go to their site right then and there. They could go high, low, anytime during the day. We have yet again seen the district proudly tout the importance of health and wellness, yet focus on mental health. Physical health is strangely ignored, should it be? I believe we would all agree the answer is no. Physical and mental health are both equal components of wellness. You can't ignore one or even half-heartedly place a bandage on it by reassigning our job duties in any capacity to individuals with job descriptions that do not even remotely resemble our job duties and expect the students to thrive and receive the same level of care that they currently are. Let me leave you with some parting considerations. What is the plan for Shady Creek and... What is the plan for Shady Creek and Philtrips? If each one of the seven health aides have three to four sites apiece and have any degree of direct care at two of these sites, how are we going to cover for somebody to go to Shady Creek or to cover a health aide where a student with direct care needs to go? How will hearing and vision be conducted? It is a whole process to create a schedule that works within just one site, much less three to four. Teachers frequently throw in a last-minute wrench in our plans, and we have to learn to go with it, and we do, and we've succeeded. But the day of, the nurses rely on us to go and get the children, bring them to the health, you know, the hearing of vision. The days following, we have to work quickly to enter those felled vision results and the hearing results, let our principals and nurses know, so that we can send out the felled vision letters and then let our nurses know who needs to be retested for hearing before we can send out those felled hearing letters. We coordinate those rechecks, and we coordinate the makeups for testing. Then we file hundreds of cards. That's for just one site. Who will pull CUM files to review for immunization compliance and then search the state database and prepare exclusion letters to mail, much less make the phone calls with parents? Who will take the time to see if parents have completed the oral health requirement for TKR Kinder students and then mail out the letters? The same question goes for first grade physicals and seventh grade immunization notices. Who is going to provide assistance on the bus to Virginia School? There was one day recently where I was out sick and...
I'm sorry, your time's up. Joanna Lasaga?
Good evening, members of the board. I would encourage the board to vote to end the employment of the health aid workers that were hired on a grant that is about to end. They were hired to contact trace. The MJUSD has other jobs that have been offered at a higher play, at a higher pay. Please do not take funds away from the general fund, which would take away from the kids. Also, these health aid workers have not been around for very long, and what did we do prior to that? I believe that there's other solutions that are viable for this. Thank you for your consideration.
Teresa, sorry, Teresa McIntyre?
How are you guys this evening? I am a parent of a child that has severe asthma. He's been found on the playground laid out several times. Regardless of funding or other stuff, I, all of us put our children in your guys' hands when we send them to school. We expect for them to be taken care of as if they were at home, but if they don't have that care, what's going to happen? My child falls out on the playground, who's going to, who's going to help him? Because he's been found several times. He has severe asthma. I don't understand why this is even up here to be even discussed. If you have child, if you have children, this is not okay. It's not. So I don't, I literally don't understand why this is even being talked about. If you have a child that is in a school and they have a illness, they should be taken care of. My child has had a health aide at his school the whole time he's been there. So for that to stop now, that's a problem. It's a problem for me to where the point, I will take my child out of Marysville and put him in another district if we're having that problem, because I can't, I can't trust you guys to have my child and you really don't have my child. I don't want to get a call one day that my child has fell out on the playground and died or had serious issues and had to go to the hospital because there's no funding. There should be funding for children, their health. The sign out there says physical, mental, and emotional well-being. This is physical. It's health, and we're just going to throw that away? I don't, I don't agree. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any questions for the board for Ms. Romero? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Steeman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Now we're at 19.2, Resolution Number 2023-24/17 regarding classified employee layoffs for lack of work, lack of funds, ED Code Section 25, 45117.
These, these two positions that are on this classified layoff, and I did do them separately since the board had seen the health aid before, these are site-funded positions that as they looked at their site budgets for next year, they were not able to, one is a reduction of hours only, that's the clerk. The second one is a reduction of a position, although they're still looking at other ways they might be able to bring something else back. So I will be working with both of those employees as well to see how we can place them within the district and work with their union, they're in the CSCA unit, to see how we can work that same process that we're doing now. So I would ask the board to approve this resolution.
Are there any questions for Ms. Romero? Now do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Frank Crawford. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Hasty. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Now we're at 19.3, approval of the Employee Contract Assistant Superintendent of Personnel.
In front of the board this evening, as you all know, I'm in the interim after Dr. Simon left. I'm pleased to bring forward the agreement, the employment agreement for Jordan Reeves, Dr. Reeves, I believe he's here in the audience, to approve him as the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel. The contract is effective May 15th, as he works with his other district, but it does have some overlap days that he would come back and so that we can do a transition as he comes on and I move on.
Hello, sir. You want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, excuse me. Yes, my name is Jordan Reeves. Currently serve as a superintendent in Sierra Unified School District down in Fresno County. I'm board willing. I'm looking forward to coming to Marysville and serve as Assistant Superintendent of Personnel.
Are there any questions? If not, do I hear a motion?
Motion approved.
Approved by Doug Quittle. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Steeman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Now we're at Business Services, 20.1, approval of the 2023-24 Second Income Financial Report. Jennifer?
Hi, good evening. Thank you. Tonight I will present the second interim budget update to you, Mr. President Davis, fellow trustees, members, cabinet members, and MJUSD community. Okay, oh. What am I doing here? Okay.
I don't know why I'm scrolling.
It's like a video. Okay, here we go. Tonight I'm going to go over the second interim. This is our financial update that goes from July 1st, so January 31st of '24 for our financials, and it projects our budget through June 30th of 2024. And tonight I will recommend to the board to approve our second interim with a positive certification. We will also go over the budget cycle, the changes since first interim, our revenue and expenditure update, our fund balance, and our multi-year projections, and then I'll talk about what's coming up next. Here's our budget reporting cycle. You see this every time I'm up here. It's just a reminder, we started in July when the board adopted the 23-24 budget. We came back in December with an update. In January, we heard the governor's proposal for our 24-25 fiscal year, and then now we're here presenting our second interim, and we've already started working on the 24-25 LCAP and budget planning. In May, we'll hear with the governor if he makes any changes from his initial proposal, and then we'll come back to you in June with our LCAP and budget and ask for you to approve and start this cycle all over again. So first, our changes since first interim. We have here a graph that shows our unrestricted change and our restricted change. And as a reminder, our general fund is split into two areas. The unrestricted is our operating funds, and restricted makes up our allocations and grant entitlements that have a purpose, a specific purpose that we must adhere to for spending. So as you can see, we have about a $1.8 million total change in our revenue, and that is mostly due to increased entitlements to our teacher residency, STESEM, and CTIG grants. Our changes from first interim for expenditures overall is a decrease to expenditures of about $2.9 million. That's mostly due to our salary and benefits. Around this time at second interim, our fiscal department and our personnel department get together and we really drill down into our positions, our vacancies, and we really try and get a good grasp and prediction of what we're going to spend for the year. So what does this mean? This is our update for our total revenue and expenditures for our total combined unrestricted and restricted general fund. This, we predict about $214 million total revenue, and as you can see from this pie chart, the majority of our revenue comes from LCFF, our local control funding formula. That's our state entitlement. And then you can see right behind that is our federal and other state revenues. Those are mostly our allocations, our restricted funds. We received a lot for pandemic relief funds and then also other grants and entitlements. For our expenditures, we're looking at spending about $250 million total. You can see that this is broken down between specific categories, and as you can tell by just looking at our total expenditures, most of our sal, most of it goes to salary and benefits. We are a people business, so it makes sense that the majority of our budget goes to salary and benefits. But in this slide here, I took out our capital outlay, which you could see in this other slide was $50 million. Those are our big construction projects we were talking about. Those are one-time expenditures, our COVLOD building, foothold modernization, and our high school tracks. So what kind of impact does this have on our fund balance? Our fund balance is we take our current year revenues minus our expenditures, and we deduct that from our beginning balance, and then that gives us an ending fund balance or reserves, and that we are predicting to end unrestricted at $27.6 million, restricted at $25 million, and combined that makes about $52.5 million. So the fund balance, what makes up that fund balance? We have revolving cash, we have our warehouse inventory, our restricted budget, our restricted funds that cannot be used except for specific purposes, our assignments of around $20 million, and our economic uncertainty. That's mandated by the state that we withhold 3%. So under assignments, items that we have in that assignment category are some fund balance of one-time discretionary monies, sped early intervention, our supplemental concentration. We have some held aside for our vacation liability and our future COP payments, and also some site discretionary. So multi-year projections, this is where we take our current year and our two out years, and we forecast out what our budget will be, and we use, we create these numbers based on assumptions we know today, like COLA, pension costs, our staffing, enrollment, and we look to look at the health, it forecasts the health of our financials. So this page here is in the executive summary. It's page 14. There's a lot of numbers, a lot of little notes, footnotes, small print. So I'm going to go over this in summary. I'll write it down between unrestricted and restricted. So our unrestricted, oh, these were supposed to fly in. This isn't a PowerPoint. I had fancy little circles coming in. Okay. Our unrestricted general fund that first read the revenues, we are projecting to increase slightly, and we, the way we came up with those numbers is we look at the COLA that's projected, and we look at our average daily attendance. And we kept our average daily attendance consistent because we are seeing an increase due to the efforts of Brian Williams and his team, but we want to be conservative. We don't want to overestimate that. And then in our expenditures, you'll see a big drop from 23-24 to 24-25, and that is due to taking out those one-time expenditures I talked about, our capital outlay, those big, and our 22-23 carryover. And then you'll see a slight increase from 24-25 to 25-26, and those are the cost of step and column and pension costs. And then under other financing sources, that's our contributions. Those are the contributions that the unrestricted general fund makes to our restricted for special ed programs and our maintenance program. So if you take our revenues minus our expenditures and other financing sources, you can see we have a deficit spending of $18.9 in the current year, but that drops down to 5.8 and 5.6 in the out years, which leaves us with an ending fund balance projected for 25-26 of $16 million.
Can you take this opportunity and just identify the deficit spending of $18.9 one more time, please?
Oh, absolutely. So what makes up that $18.9 is the, that we're spending more than our revenues, but we know that, some of that's mindful. We know that we have those one-time projects in there from our one-time, we used, we knew, we knew we were taking it from our fund balance. We planned it. It's for the high school tracks. It's a carryover from 22-23 that we, our sites that we know can use in the following year. They didn't spend it all in 22-23, so we allow it to be carried over and then spent in the next year. But they're spent on one-time dollar, one-time expenditures. It's a similar pattern with our restricted. You can see that our revenue is pretty high at $79.7 million, and it drops to $40 million. That's removing those one-time dollars, the pandemic relief funds that we're using for the big construction projects, our learning recovery block grant and other grants we receive in 23-24, but we have multiple years to spend, but we only record the revenue in the first current year. Then with our expenditures, you can see that they drop from 23-24 to 24-25. That's the same as in unrestricted, we're removing those one-time expenditures, and then it does increase slightly in 25-26, and then it's, again, it's for the cost of seven column or other known expenditures. You'll see, though, under other financing for contributions, it's actually a positive. It's because it's receiving the contributions from unrestricted to restricted to fund those, fund special ed and our routine maintenance. You can see we are deficit spending from 16.2 this year, and it decreases down to 5.6 in the out years, and we're looking at a ending fund balance in 25-26 of 13.9. And this fluctuates based on grants and allocations that we receive. This is an overview of combining our unrestricted and restricted. I'm not going to go through all the details again, but you can see in 25-26, we have about a $30 million projected fund balance. So I've shown this, I've shown this graph a few times. This is a, the green blocks represent all of our COVID relief funds we've received. As Jessica referred to earlier, we do have a spending deadline of this year, but we have received some one-time grant money to bridge that cliff that we're about to enter, and those are the blue squares, and so it shows how we've allocated or dollar amounts that we've allocated. And the learning recovery emergency grant is going towards student supports that we put into place with the ESER funds that we're going to continue out into the 28th year. So going forward, so you notice we are deficit spending. So as we build the 24-25 budget, we're going to look at and take into consideration staffing and position control, we're going to look at vacancies, extra duty and overtime. Of course, we're always going to take into consideration PERS and STIRS costs, and we're going to look at maximizing our restricted grants for administrative positions whenever possible. And we've already started our local control accountability plan with our meetings, and that really drives our budget. We're also taking a deep dive in decreasing district department budgets by 10%, and we're also going to decrease facilities contributions, and we're really going to scrutinize those expenditures and ensure that they're essential for student success. We're also going to take a look at our operating expenditures, our fuel, our utilities. As you heard from SiteLogic earlier, we're really looking at ways for energy efficiency, and then we're going to continue to apply for grants to offset the ongoing and current grant-funded positions. Our timeline, so as I mentioned earlier, we're going to come back in June with our LCAP and our budget for the '24-25 year and ask for approval. It's really dictated by the state budget, which they're working on right now. We'll hear back in May, see what the governor proposes, and then their final state budget will hopefully be approved in June, and then, as you know, in July through August, they have the trailer bills, and I come back with a 45-day revise if its material changes. I just want to say thank you to all of you tonight, and also to Cindy Helms and the fiscal department for all their hard work and getting these great numbers for us. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for the board, for Jennifer? If not, do I hear a motion?
Jennifer, I'm just trying to wrap my head around. Could you go back to the ending fund balance?
Yes, which...
The slide that actually has the title called the ending fund, fund balance?
Oh, this, oops, this one.
The one that you just had. Yeah. So, so part of the large contribution to the unrestricted fund being really negative is that minus $22 million that's on the other financing sources and uses, right? If I understand the accounting correctly, what attributes to that minus $22 million?
It's our sped program, our special ed program. We receive funding from the federal and state government for our program, but it's not enough, so the general fund contributes to that, to a total overall budget for our special ed, and that is ran, and it's, for accounting purposes, it's in our restricted side. That's how we account.
So on the unrestricted side, right? Is, so...
That's the unrestricted. That's the $22 million that's going into the restricted, and that, that goes into the restricted to cover those programs.
Oh, interesting. Oh, okay. That makes sense. Okay. Yeah, it's a, it's an accounting maneuver.
It's an accounting, yes. So they live in the restricted side because we are, we can only use those dollars for certain, you know, for special ed students or for maintenance, routine maintenance, and so it's, they have to be, but we, the general fund unrestricted pays for it.
So, so then, now the stupid question is going to be asked. If it's, if it's an accounting maneuver to move money from unrestricted to restricted for sped, does that mean that the restricted is actually, it takes account, it has to take account for that $22 million? So what's causing that restricted to be so negative then?
It can be that we received money that's multi-year, so maybe in '22-23, we received a grant that covers five years, let's say. I can't think of one off the top of my head, but we have many of them, and those expenditures will deplete from the fund balance because we've already received the money, so we wouldn't have it in our revenue. So we know we're mindful, we know we're going to be spending from our fund balance.
That, that, it's stupid a question. Then what attributes that $35 million negative on combined then?
It's the total of our 18.9 deficit in our unrestricted that we're spending plus the six.
The non-accountant, what is the, what is the large share of the pie of the cost of that minus $30 million?
Of the minus 35 million?
Yeah, yeah, for the non-accountant, because I, I can add the two numbers together. The question is, what is the...
So what's in there? What's making that up?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The 18.9 million is mostly the high school tracks, one-time funds that we started last year, that we carried over into this year.
Got it.
And so we know that it was sitting in our fund balance that we, we call it budget above the line, above the fund balance line. It's into our budget now. So the money has to come from somewhere, so it comes from the fund balance.
Got it, got it. So, so then, a stupid question then. If that 18 million, part of that is attribution to the track, right? 11 million, right? Five for Lindhurst and six for Marisol. Has the Marisol track been started?
The Marysville track is in DSA, and we're hoping to hear something soon.
Meaning that the money...
Meaning that it went to the depart, the Division of State Architect to approve our plans. The plans are approved.
So how much of that, 6 million has been spent on the Marisol track?
Ooh, just the architects and DSA fees, which I don't have that number in front of me, but I can get that for you. And, and out of this, the Marysville track is 5 million also, and five for Lindhurst. We also have a million in there for safety, security, technology.
But what happened to the million-dollar change order that was on top of that five, right? Because Marisol's track...
That's coming out of capital outlay fund 40. This is our general fund.
Got it, got it.
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Okay.
Thanks, anymore? These are fun questions. Thank you.
Are there any other questions for Jennifer?
For May, or?
No, the governor's proposed...
In May, he'll come back. What did he give us in January? He's, it was a lot of things, but our call is it? Yeah. Okay, let's talk. Okay.
Are there any other questions for Jennifer? If not, do I hear a motion? Motion approved by Frank Crawford is her second. Second by Dr. Yang. All those in favor say aye.
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Now we have public comments. Denise Seiler.
My name is Denise Seiler, and I'm here just really, it's a pleasure to be here.
You, you need to be at the microphone, dear.
It is a pleasure to be here. I am new to the community, just moved to Yuba County. I am from Yuba City. I've been a schoolteacher for Yuba City Unified for 27 years, and I am the founder of Be Like Johnny and 501(c)(3), dedicated to empowering, educating, and growing kind, compassionate humans who serve the land, animals, and each other. And so I'm here just because I'm moving to the area, and I want to support Yuba County in any way I can. We are piloting farm-to-fork-to-table at Franklin Elementary School. As a third-grade teacher, I'm actually growing it organically from the inside out. I've reached out to a few teachers and administrators within Yuba County, and I would like to grow it in, in your school district. So I'm just here to say hello, thank you for having me, and if you can point me in any direction, any school, I would be happy to serve. So thank you.
Thank you. Pardon me if I can't pronounce this, Farina DiGinoro? Thank you, I'm sorry. Now we have Rebecca Carlson.
Hello again. I would ask, first of all, can public comment possibly be moved to the beginning or more towards the front of the meetings? Not that I don't appreciate all the slideshow presentations, I'm actually thinking I should get a job here presenting slideshows. So that's just a, a comment saying maybe have a little bit more respect for people. You might get a little more public involvement in the school system from parents and people that actually care really a lot about the, the kids and what happens here if they were able to speak a little bit earlier. Thank you Seth Steeman for your comments earlier. I appreciate that he was able to make those comments while the room was full of parents to educate them and to inform them on things that are happening within this school district. I coached field hockey for 20 years, River Valley High School, Yuba City High School. I also taught abstinence for a number of years in the high schools, specifically at a school here in MJUSD District. And the book that Seth is talking about, really, I, I get that it's coming down from the state, but how do you as a board have to hear about that book from the PE teachers? And there's more that we can do. So my question is, were you not aware of it? How were, how were you not aware of it? That's the curriculum. That is what is happening in the classrooms. Also, I would ask that something be put on the agenda, whether it be abstinence education going directly along with that education, if it is taught. Thank you for the gym teachers that are actually standing up for that. This book is a seriously, it psychologically messes with impressional young, impressionable young minds, and I personally consider it child abuse. It's between the parents and the children, some of these conversations, and it shouldn't be in the school systems. What the, the young people need, they actually need people that would start protecting them and protecting their innocence and stop having people prey on them through a place where the mother said earlier, it should be a safe area. With this, these mindsets, these are actually Marxist mindsets that cause the kids great emotional and psychological damage. What we need is people to speak the truth. Psalms 139 says, "Before I knew you, I formed you in the womb. I knit you together, and I formed you in secret." That's God designing man and woman, and that's what it is, and, and that's what these kids need to know. They need to know the truth, because the truth sets them free and brings healing, and they need strong leaders and people that will stand up and speak that truth as opposed to books like that.
Thank you.
So, again, Joanna Lasaga, thank you guys for listening to me. It just begs the question, if you're aware of this Positive Prevention Plus book being taught in the PE classes, or are you trying to slip this through the cracks and keep us under the radar? Are you trying to hide this from the parents and not let them be aware of what you are trying to teach the children? Because during COVID times, as we now describe it, we were told to trust the science. Trusting the science in that instance meant that we were to believe that a nanoparticle would not travel through a mask. We were told to trust the science when we were told we could not use ivermectin, when in reality it was created for human consumption. We were told to trust the science when we were told that hydroxychloroquine would be harmful to us and not reduce the risk of COVID and is used daily all over the world to protect against malaria. We were told to trust the science when we were told to stay inside, when in reality vitamin D from the sun was one of the best things that was helpful for fighting COVID, like they did with the Spanish flu. So now when we go into talking about hu, human sexuality, we are told to ignore the science. We are told that in your heart is where you will find the sexual orientation, not in your groin. We are now told to not trust science when we decide to figure out that our gender identity is in our brains, not in our groins. So listen, folks, you cannot have this both ways. You got to trust the science. First and foremost, this is a parental issue, and how dare you think that you should make this decision over the parents? In Genesis in the Bible, God tells us to be fruitful and multiply. Woman on woman, man on man, do not multiply. So if you turn to page 27 of your beloved book, it talks about the emergency contraception. Did it ever occur to you that maybe these kids should be counseled regarding adoption? Or are all of you in favor of killing babies? Because that's what's going to happen, that's what you're promoting. Again, have you guys even seen this book? At any point did it cross your minds to have the parents receive a copy of it, to perhaps sign for approval of their child being taught what is in this? It's disgusting. I urge all of you to stand up against this and say no to the governor. It's going to take you guys standing up, saying no, we do not want to have this in our schools. And now don't make me rally the parents like we did for Measure S, because we will do it again for this book. Do not teach our children the crap that's in this book, because we will come for you to protect the babies that we gave birth to.
Mr. Steeman has one to close the meeting.
I would actually just like to make a motion to thoroughly review this curriculum and look for suitable replacement for it.
We cannot address that at this time.
Yeah, absolutely. Let's put it on the agenda.
You have to bring it back.
The motion is to put it on the agenda to review and look for a suitable replacement.
Second, yeah, second.
All right.
Yubasutter.live's local government livestreams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter, and Nevada Counties.